Hello, everybody. Welcome. This is a virtual meeting of the Transportation Committee of the Baltimore City Council. In attendance, we have, I'm Ryan Dorsey, the Chair of the Committee. We are joined by Leon Pinkett, the Vice Chair from the 7th District, John Bullock from the 9th District, member of the Committee. We are joined here today also by staff from the Mayor's Office. We have Matthew Stegman with us. We also have General Counsel to the City Council, Rebecca Simmons. We have our Committee staff here, Jennifer Coats. Thank you, Jennifer, as always. And we are joined by several staff from the Baltimore Police Department, Colonel Rich Worley, Michelle Wortsberger. And we have one other person, Shala Graham, who I don't know.
She's our Chief Financial Officer. I also have Major Corbett and Captain Stewart in my office.
Okay, great. Thank you all for joining us today. Just before we begin, I just want to remind everybody that when you're not speaking, to mute yourself and to identify yourself before you speak. And after you finish speaking, mute yourself again. We will take some time for public testimony in a bit, after some discussion with the Committee and the Representatives from the Baltimore Police Department here. And at that time, I'll kind of go over what I'm going to do in a couple of cases where we may have people who are on the phone rather than on the web platform. So I thank everybody for joining us here today for a legislative oversight hearing. We're here to talk about the Police Department's response and reporting on incidents involving drivers and vulnerable road users. And there are a number of facets of this conversation that I'd like for us to be able to cover. And a good bit of what I have to bring up is based on personal experience, because I've got a good bit of it. But of course, I hear a lot from a lot of people around the city. And recently, we also had a very notable incident where a driver intentionally hit a group of cyclists in East Baltimore. And I understand that the Police Department made an arrest in that case. And it's good to see some action being taken there. I just want to have a more general conversation about what should happen in a pretty common set of conditions that people experience in the city as vulnerable road users. What police response should be? And where those expectations are laid out? So I want to open it up there. Before we get started, I want to ask if there are any thoughts that either of the other members of the Committee would like to share in opening thoughts here.
I'll just say thank you, Mr. Chair, for holding the hearing. I know a lot of us are troubled by some of the accounts of some of our people being victimized when they're just trying to be in the public right of way and using bicycles or walking. So again, it's something that affects us all as citizens of Baltimore. So thank you for having this hearing. And I think members of our public service, in terms of the police, in terms of being here for this hearing. So thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Pinkett, anything?
No, I just want to follow up on what Councilman Bullock said. Chairman Dorsey, thank you for hosting this, or holding this hearing. I think that it's important that as we make it more safe and convenient for our roads to be used by all users, that we make certain that we not only enforce the laws, but we assure that they can use them and not have their health and safety threatened. And that we will be vigilant about making certain that that is assured. So thank you for holding this hearing and looking forward to the testimony.
Thank you both. So this topic is something that I've had a number of discussions with staff from the Police Department, Colonel Worley and Michelle, and Andy Smolian, who I see is on the attendee list here. We all sat down together with, I think, somebody else from the Police Department, and Liz Cornish from Bike More. We sat down a while ago and had a conversation over at the Police Headquarters about a different facet of this, which is the public relations, the communications that come out of the Department, and the use of language that takes at least a neutral tone that doesn't imply fault on cyclists or victimizing drivers and things like that. Having messaging that doesn't reflect the windshield view, the view of the bias of people who have the general operating manner of being in a car, and the worldview that comes from that, the dashboard lens. I think that that's a part of it, because I think that we probably all could agree that we are at a point of significant transition in Baltimore, where we have to start to confront the fact that a lot of the ways that we address the use of public space and respond to use in public space comes from a pretty deeply ingrained perception of that space being primarily for automobiles and secondarily for anything and anybody else. And really shifting that paradigm to prioritize vulnerable road users and vulnerable users, and really the equitable use for all people of public space. So we've had some conversation about this and some of the shortcomings. And in responses in the past, and I would say in an ongoing way in my own experience, what I'd like to do is relay for everybody here a couple of experiences that I think are indicative of the kind of concern that exists. And I'm going to relay three of my own personal experiences and then one that we did discuss in one of our past meetings. In 2017, I was intentionally struck by a driver on Hartford Road. And I called for a police response. In fact, I called Colonel Worley directly at that time. And police came pretty quickly after that. And I got an incident report. And I provided the photographs of the vehicle. So we had the make, model, we had the tag, we had the color of the vehicle. But nothing really much more happened after that. And I think there's a public sense that when you're able to provide, essentially, all of the available information to the Police Department, that there's some expectation that something is going to come from that. On June 2 of this year, I was cycling westbound on Frederick. And a driver traveling eastbound abruptly made a left turn in front of me, failing to yield to me as oncoming traffic. And I struck the side of that vehicle and went over the hood and landed on my head on the asphalt on the other side of that vehicle. And this driver and I both waited for an officer to respond to that. And when the officer arrived, the driver was still there and admitting fault. Yet, the officer declined to note in his report that the driver was at fault or make any acknowledgement that this driver had failed to yield to oncoming traffic. And in fact, later refused to take any statement from me, any statement from the driver, or any statement from the witness who was standing about 30 feet away and was still there when the officer arrived. And you can see all of this on the body worn camera footage. And further, when the officer did finally file a report, it was riddled with false information about what had actually occurred there. And essentially, I have no recourse except to file an Internal Affairs report, which I've done. But it's been months now, and I have no resolution to that. I don't really have much faith that anything's going to come from that. More recently than that, I was traveling west on Gwyns Falls, and a driver threw a water bottle out their window at me and hit me while I was biking. And unsatisfied by that, and my unfazed response, the driver then threw a full bag of trash out their car window at me. And unsatisfied by me brushing that off, the driver then tried to hit me intentionally with her car and then sped away. I provided the Police Department photos of the driver, photos of the car, date and time of the location, and the location of the incident. And I tried, I tried really, really hard to report this to the city's telephone reporting unit and was told that it was impossible for me to report this via telephone. There was absolutely no value to be found in the exact location where it happened. I think that there'd be no disputing that, that when a driver simply throws something at me and drives off, there's nothing meaningful to be gained from a crime scene investigation. And there's nothing more to be gained by a conversation in person with me, say at my home or some other location at some later time, than there would be over the phone. And so it raised the concern for me of why it's challenging or why it's not possible to simply make a telephone report about these kinds of incidents. And particularly, because such assaults on cyclists are commonplace throughout the city. The last thing that I want to relay is an incident that occurred, I don't know, a year and a half or so ago, where Michelle and Colonel Worley and I and others from Bike More reviewed some body worn camera footage of an incident that occurred on Fort Avenue in South Baltimore near the entrance to McHenry Row. And where a driver, it was an incident very similar to what I experienced on June 2, where a driver didn't look at oncoming traffic and made a turn, a left turn, across oncoming traffic and cut off a cyclist at the last minute, where there were witnesses. And there was no question, the driver stayed there. There was no question as to whether the driver had done this. The cyclist said to the officer, just like I did, "Are you going to write this person a ticket for failing to yield to oncoming traffic?" And witnesses that were standing by confirmed the account. Yet, on the body worn camera footage, what you can see is the officer sitting in their car alone, orating, thinking out loud, saying two things in particular. One, "I can't fault that driver." I mean, they're both at fault, when that's very, very clearly not the case. And this is really, really indicative of a certain kind of bias, that the law is unequivocal, that you have to yield to oncoming traffic. Yet, the officer somehow comes to the belief that both parties are somehow at fault, even though one was traveling straight with the right of way and the other cut them off. If these were two cars, the officer, I'm sure, would have seen this entirely differently. The officer would not have treated this cyclist as a second-class consideration. The other thing that the officer says to himself is, "Well, I mean, I can't entirely fault this driver. I mean, the sun was in her eyes." As if the laws of the road change based on the rotation of the Earth around the Sun, the relative position of the Sun to this side of the planet. The laws just don't change like that. Yet, we see on the body worn camera that this is the thinking of the officer. And so, to me, it's a really clear depiction of an officer conflicted with their own bias and their own worldview and allowing that to get in the way of upholding the law in the interest of the more vulnerable road user with whom they can lesser identify than the driver of another vehicle. So that's kind of my opening here, to just share some experiences, both firsthand and what I've learned from others. Countless other people have relayed to me that they've been intentionally hit by drivers, had things thrown at them, have experienced very aggressive behavior from drivers. And across the board, I get this really strong sense from people that the Baltimore Police Department doesn't really have an adequate way of addressing those concerns. And so that's what I'd like to hear from the Department about today. So if I could open it up and just give the floor to folks from the Police Department, before we do that, I just do want to note we have also been joined by Dominic McIlaly from the Council President's Office.
Yeah, good afternoon. It's Colonel Worley. I can start off with, basically, I'll go back to your first, your one incident with the one you called the telephone recording unit. The telephone recording unit can only handle certain crimes. And what you were describing is an aggravated assault. So they're not allowed to handle an aggravated assault. We just don't take those calls over the phone simply because they do need to be investigated. And they will be eventually investigated by a detective. Because what happens on an ag assault, if you don't see the officer, and we could have waited and taken it at a later time when you got home, because I know they went to your house looking for you and upset your wife. But that's because they knew who you were. So they wanted to see if they could talk to you at your house. And I apologize for that, for getting your wife upset. They were trying to follow up, and because they knew who you were and where you lived, they went. So what they do is they will do the initial report for an aggravated assault, and then it gets turned over to a detective, who will then follow up with the case and with the information that you have. And my first question, next question with that one, is was that done, or was nothing ever done with that case since then?
Nothing has ever happened since that case. If I can ask a question real quick.
Yeah.
Where is the line in the sand between an assault and an aggravated assault? I assume that assault is a lesser degree than an aggravated assault. And if it were merely an assault, is that something that can be reported through the telephone reporting unit?
Most of the time, we do not let them take assault cases because it's one person on another. So it's just the assaults are something that... And basically, what it is, it's a first degree assault, which is an aggravated assault. That's usually, a weapon is used or implied. So that is never taken over the phone. And basically, the common assaults are not going to be taken over the phone as well. We just don't want the telephone reporting unit doing a person-on-person crime. It's mainly property crime, some auto accidents, destruction of property, some false pretense with checks. So any of the pretty much person-on-person crime, it's going to require an officer to respond. And then, like I said, it's a weapon. So as soon as she threw the water bottle at you, that's an aggravated assault. Whether it hit you or not, she attempted to throw an object at you. And then if they intentionally try to hit you with their vehicle, that's an aggravated assault. So both of those things are aggravated assaults, which would arise above the telephone reporting. Now, was a report ever taken, or did you ever talk to anybody after the initial call?
Nothing.
Do you want to? Because I've got your pictures. I'm looking at you. It was a red car, right?
I'd have to go back and look at the pictures at this point.
Yeah, I've got what Michelle sent me. And I think there's a red car with a clear tag number.
Yeah. We can follow up about that. I'd like for us to try to stick to the high level here, the themes.
No, I got you. And with the citations, it is under the officer's discretion. It's left up to the officer as to whether they issue a citation. And I can tell you, probably 90% of our cases, and I'm going by my personal experience of looking at hundreds of auto accident reports, when there's an auto accident, unless the officer actually sees the accident, they very rarely will issue a citation unless they see it themselves. And they have the discretion, that's given to them by the state and by the city, that they are not forced to write a citation. But they do have to thoroughly investigate the accident and put things down based on facts and witness testimony. I did hundreds of accident reports when I was an officer, when we had the totally different report other than the ACERS. And then they have to put it into the ACERS, which is the electronic reporting system. So they do have a duty to respond and investigate, just like they do any other crime, and follow through on it and complete the report. The report gets reviewed by a supervisor and has to be approved by a supervisor once the report is submitted. And it should be submitted by the end of their tour of duty. So at worst case, within 48 hours, there should be a copy of the report available.
So I have two questions about this. One, I understand the officer's discretion in terms of issuing a citation. What is the expectation in terms of assessing fault?
If they can do it, they will do it. Obviously, if somebody admits it, that should be documented in the narrative of the report. And then you would check, well, I've never done an ACERS, to be honest with you. But in the O report, there's a box you just check. So I imagine there's still a box where you just check if there's fault, with drivers at fault, because the investigation should lead you to that. I mean, almost any time a person is making, just hypothetically, almost any time a person is making a left turn without the left turn signal being green, you are at fault if you hit something that's coming the other way. If you're going east and you're turning to go north, and there's a vehicle coming west, and you're struck by that vehicle, you're pretty much at fault because you're crossing that person's path of traffic. So investigations are done, they're given investigative training in the academy, so they all know how to investigate accidents. And it's not, I'm not being smart, but it's not rocket science. You've got the accident, you've got most of the stuff right there in front of you to look at. So they should be able to somewhat determine what happened at the scene and articulate that in their report. They may not notify fault, or they may not put fault in the report, but the report should almost document itself as to who was at fault, unless it is something where both vehicles were doing something that could have been construed as... I can't think of an incident, but there's a lot of them where they could document fault if they so desired. But again, that's their discretion because they weren't there. They did not see it, so they can't 100% say that it was...
Yeah, so I think exactly what you said is one of the biggest concerns at hand. Your exact words were, "It's not rocket science." It really isn't, like anybody with any sense at all. I mean, you don't even have to have a driver's license. But by the time you're 14, 15 years old, you understand how vehicles move on the roadway. Anybody with any level of common sense most likely understands what your obligations are as a driver and what you should reasonably expect of other drivers. And in that, anybody with a similar level of common sense could deduce from a scenario what occurred. And so, like you said, the report should write itself. But then you come back to the issue of whether the officer is doing what they should be doing to make the report in the first place. So in both of the cases that I described with left turns, like you referred to, the one in which I was involved on June 2 of this year, and the one that occurred some time ago down on Fort Avenue, the officer just effectively declined to accept any information about what actually occurred and essentially denied the facts of the scenario. And in my case, there's no other way to put it, but created his own set of facts. I mean, the driver that cut me off was traveling eastbound and turning northbound. And they wrote onto their report that the driver was traveling south and continuing south. It's just a completely and utterly falsified set of information. And like I said, he declined to take any information from me or the driver, document anything of the case. And in the other case on Fort Avenue, you can even see the officer being told by the witnesses. The officer says, "So, here's what I understand happened here." And the witnesses said, "No, that's not what we told you. This is what happened." Even then, the officer declined to accept the witness testimony as proper witness testimony, I guess. And so I'm trying to, I guess I want to understand what the expectation is in such a situation. Does a person have to call for a supervisor? And I feel like that also comes with a fear of adversarial response. Can you speak to that?
Yes. If the officer refuses to take a witness statement or refuses to take a statement from a victim or the driver, that's unacceptable. And there's no other way of saying it. That is unacceptable. That's their job. Their job is to investigate the accident. And part of that investigation is to interview the parties involved and any witnesses who may have seen it. It's also to see if there are any cameras that could have captured it, that could clear it up. But when you write the accident report, there is a narrative, I mean, there is an area where you write a... You actually have to do the drawing that should show if the vehicle was making a right turn or a left turn, and the fact of the direction of who else the other vehicle was coming. And that, again, should almost, should almost show itself. Obviously, if the vehicle was making a left turn and he doesn't have a green arrow, he is to yield to oncoming traffic from the other direction. So these are all the laws that are in place. But yes, to your other question, absolutely call a supervisor. And if you're not happy with him, call for another supervisor. I know it gets monotonous to do that. But the supervisor showing up on the scene, his job is to make sure his officer does the job. And if neither one of them want to do it, then we can follow just what you did with Internal Affairs. And they can investigate. The greatest thing, our greatest tool for us is the body worn camera, because everything is on video and audio now. So there's nothing that they can, the officers, more times than not, it actually helps the officer in the investigation. So that is a great tool for us, it's a great tool for Internal Affairs. So if you have that case, and they can look at the body worn camera and they can see what he did. If you have the witnesses' information, provide that to Internal Affairs as well so that they can interview the witness. Because that investigation, if it went the way you said it did, it was totally unacceptable. I got no other, I mean, I'm not going to explain it because there's nothing to explain the behavior that occurred. If it occurred exactly like that, then he just did a crappy investigation, didn't do his job.
It was, I'll say, maybe I'll move on after this, but I'll just note that it was all the more troubling that this officer had on his uniform a small badge of a bicycle, that this, in fact, was an officer who told me directly that he sometimes does patrol work on bicycle. And I think it's exceptionally troubling that even somebody who gets put in that vulnerable road user position in the course of their work is still unwilling to address this situation in the way that I think any reasonable person expects that they should. reasonable person expects that they should. Um, I'm wondering, I mean, if there's any, if the department is actively working in any way to improve the, I mean, I guess citizens are always going to have, you know, it's not uncommon for citizens to have complaints about police officers and, and, and for there to be kind of a challenging kind of circumstance where people feel like more that should be, there's more that should be done. Um, going beyond kind of thinking about this in kind of the general terms, um, of, you know, just kind of like if things don't go the way things should go, call for a supervisor. If things don't go so well still, go to AID. Is there anything that is, is, I feel like this is such a known, um, sense from people who, you know, particularly cyclists, um, the sense that BPD could be doing better in these kinds of situations. It seems well enough known to me that I wonder, is it well enough known to BPD that BPD is actively doing anything in particular to try to improve, um, response and outcomes and such?
Actually, as a matter of fact, we are, um, under our mobile metro unit, we are putting together a traffic enforcement unit. Because what would happen in the past is our, our, our motors unit used to do a good deal of the traffic enforcement, um, and, and especially when we had the fatal incidents. So when they disappeared and with COVID and all the different things occurring over the last several months, we have seen a dramatic, actually an alarming increase in fatal crashes in the city. We've had, our fatal crashes are up 72% this year compared to last year. We've had 55 people killed on our roadways in the city this year compared to 32, which is a 23% increase. Um, one of the most alarming things on that one is that 17 of those victims were pedestrians. Um, and even more alarming, um, almost 10 of those were hit and runs where the vehicle driver did not even stay at the scene. So these are all very alarming things that are leading us to put together a traffic enforcement unit. And we did it as quickly as we could with proper interviews and, and, um, making sure we had the correct officers in the correct spots. It's going to be a small unit, but it's something that we're going to put together to go out there and hit these areas where we have the fatal crashes. We can go and issue citations where we're getting complaints about DUIs. If you guys have areas where we have particular incidents where bike, bike and bicyclists feel like their, their rights are not being, um, their rights to the roadway are being violated, give us those addresses, we can go and do traffic enforcement. That's all this unit is going to do. They're not going to be doing anything else other than traffic enforcement. Every single day they're working, eight hours a day, they're going to go out and they're going to write citations because we've got to get, I mean, every one of us drive in the city and the motorists think it's an Indianapolis Speedway now. If you ever drove, you drive uphill and road, they just fly up there so fast that it's unbelievable. So they're going to start doing radar. Every officer is a LiDAR trained. Um, we, every district except for one has a LiDAR gun. So we got to get them one of those, get the district, one of those guns. And everybody has officers who are LiDAR trained. Um, so we can put them out there to do the traffic enforcement because the, the amount of speeding is leading to a lot of accidents. Um, so those are the things that we're going, we've seen the increase and we're putting something together to start it. Hopefully within the next two to three weeks, that unit will be up and operational. Um, five days a week, eight hours a day doing nothing but traffic enforcement. Plus we get some, we get some federal grants, but the federal grants are usually, um, for DUI, DWI work, um, that, that we have to, we have to use, but, um, we can certainly look for other grants if anyone knows of any or out there for bicyclists enforcement.
Councilman, um, do you mind if I interject just for a moment?
Please do.
Colonel Warley, um, kind of, I, I think, uh, moved us into another part of this discussion that you wanted to have in terms of grants, um, that are available to us. We have Shala Graham, who is our chief, uh, financial officer on the line, as well as Jacob Nab from our grant section, to answer the questions that you had posed earlier to me about, you know, how, how we are utilizing those grant funds, if, if you'd like to move into that discussion now.
I think we talked about some of that. Yeah, please.
Okay.
And I could just, I could just, um, preface this kind of with my understanding of, um, uh, what we're talking about. Um, the, there's a highway safety plan grant that's allocated through the state each year. Um, that money, my understanding, that's NHTSA. This is, um, federal money that, uh, is passed down through the state and to various jurisdictions and entities within them. Um, and this is done in partnership with, uh, MDOT and particularly, uh, some work that they do partnering with folks at Shock Trauma, um, and research about where the highest, uh, um, safety concerns are in any given jurisdiction. And so there's this money that basically says, uh, we, MDOT have identified some places where, uh, there's great danger and we want you to go there. And this money, um, from my understanding, will pay for officers at an overtime rate to conduct enforcement in those specific zones. But the city has to, um, collect that money through reimbursement. And one of my concerns is that our amount is going down, but it's going down at a rate that is much higher than other jurisdictions. And I'm, my understanding is that that may be because we're not availing ourselves of the allocation that's allotted to us year over year, that if the state basically sees that we're not taking advantage of that money, they're going to allocate us less money the following year.
Well, good afternoon, um, council member, and thank you for having me today. And you actually provided a great summary of the grant. Um, the grant is actually, um, formula based. Um, so the formula is based on the miles of roadways in Baltimore City in conjunction with crash and injury fertility data, um, fatality data, sorry. And based on that, that is how they decide how much to award as a city or as a police department.
So I would have to ask MDOT how we stack up against other jurisdictions. Um, my staff and I did a look at this recently, uh, the funding from 2016 through 2020. The, the funding, uh, I guess for FY21 was just announced a week or so ago. Um, we looked at, we compared Annapolis to Baltimore County to Baltimore City. Um, Baltimore City, so over this, since from 2016 to 2020, um, the total allocation to the state, uh, went down by, uh, 6% from 12 and a half million to 11.8 million. Um, within that same timeframe, Anarundo County's funding went down by 20%. But Baltimore City's funding went down by 42%. And I don't think that that's because we've reduced the number of crashes in Baltimore City. Um, and at the same time, Baltimore County has essentially remained the same. Uh, Anarundo County with a population comparable to ours is receiving three times as much as what we're receiving. And, um, you know, this year our allocation is only $39,000. That's down 42% since 2016. Uh, with us receiving only 32, $39,000 this year, at the same time Baltimore County is receiving in the ballpark of 100 and, of 330,000. So almost 10 times as much as we are. And they don't have 10 times the number of fatalities on their roads that we do. So I, I, I have to believe that it also has something to do with us just not taking advantage of the money and the state just saying, look, if you're not going to, if you, you, you don't use it, you're going to lose it.
Yeah. And we can look into that as well and, and talk to them and see what information we can get. And, um, there are restrictions on the grant. Um, it sounds like you've done a lot of research, so you're probably aware of the waves. So there's a specific calendar and when the five categories can actually be used. And it sets the specific date that you can hit that, that funding and, and do that overtime detail and even the specific time. And 50% of the funding, um, has to be used, um, between 9:00 PM and 5:00 AM, I believe. Um, so there's a lot of restrictions on the actual specific date and time that you can use the funding. And then I believe that each officer is restricted to, um, six hours of the overtime. Um, and then obviously from an operational standpoint, you know, we have staffing shortages. So combined with the restrictions of the grant, and obviously this is an operational question, so I, I don't want to talk for them. Um, but the, the grant itself within the waves makes it very restricted for us to, um, you know, fully utilize all of the overtime that is available.
I, if you could send me, that is not something, I don't have, um, those restrictions and that kind of, that level of detail on it. If you could send me to that, send me that, I'd be really interested to see that. And, um, I think that'll help, you know, look, I, it's really, it's great to hear that the city, uh, that the department is developing this, um, traffic unit, which is sorely needed. I mean, look, when people in my district talk about like, uh, you know, they kind of ask like, what are the police doing? Um, one of the things that I hear, probably the thing that I hear more than anything is where are the police when it comes to these traffic problems? Why aren't they doing more? Um, so I know that, um, my district is going to be really happy to hear that, uh, this unit is being developed and that there's a commitment, um, to, um, you know, five days a week, eight hours a day. I'd like to definitely be as great a partner as I can be in making sure that we're availing ourselves of every single dollar, um, that these, you know, that this grant makes available to us. Um, and also, you know, recognizing the department has a paperwork problem. The department has, uh, a reporting problem. You know, the, the department, um, you know, I, I realize that the, that there, that as a reimbursement based program, that being able to make reports and get that, that information together in order to file it properly with the state, maybe that's a challenge too. And I'd like to help, uh, make sure that we have all of the available capacity to do that. Um, what else?
Just, uh, just another problem with the, um, with the, we have written almost, uh, let's see, I'm trying to calculate the, can calculate it. We, we've written about, um, probably about 5,500 accident reports already this year. Uh, so, and that's not counting the fatal, the fatals are, are what really, really is, is alarming is the amount of fatal accidents that have increased this year and the speed at which people travel through the city. It's just.
Those 500 reports, are those all meters reports?
Acres, you mean?
Acres.
Yes. Yes, they are all, actually it's, uh, injured per, uh, it was signal 31, it was accident with an injured person is, is 2,300 of those. And then there was accidents that were just signal 30s where there was just property damage, no injured person is 3,300. So that's about 57. Actually it's a little more, it's a little over 6,000 because then there was another 430, 483, um, that we looked at in a different way. So it's right, a little over 6,000, right around 6,000 accident reports written thus far this year. Um, so it's the accidents, I have to look at that to see how it compares to other years, um, because we, we don't write reports for as many incidents as we used to, um, simply to free up some officers, um, because of our staffing shortages, but that's still a lot of, lot of reports because you figure it takes about two hours to complete the report, um, because he's got to get all the information and unfortunately they've got to go to the station to type it when there's certain computer, only certain computers have the acres.
Uh, does an aggravated assault get reported? It, 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 one of the things I'm concerned with, and it's great to hear that all these reports are getting made. And that means that there should theoretically be detailed information about where all of them, you know, the information available about where all of those incidents occurred. And that's really important for the city to be able to identify, um, not just where to send officers, but where to send infrastructural change to create greater safety, uh, by, through design. Um, but if aggravated assaults aren't also included in that and kind of street harassment aren't included in that, then I feel like maybe we're missing a part of the picture. How does the reporting of those kinds of things differ? And, cause I would say that like, one of the reasons that I experience or others experience aggravated assault is because a driver feels entitled to the space to which I am actually entitled. Um, that I have a right to be using the street, but the driver doesn't believe so. And that would be a lot clearer if there were dedicated space for me. And the frequency with which people experience aggravated assaults in those locations is probably also a good indicator that we should be, you know, the DOT, for example, should be funding improvements, uh, in the infrastructure in that location. How do we, can we cull that data in the same way? Um, and again, is there, is there a way of categorizing that stuff that would make it readily available, um, along with crash data?
I don't know of any, to be honest with you, because if it becomes an aggravated assault, then it's not going to be listed as a, as an, as a fatal crash. Now, we are getting a new records management system and once we have that, we will be able to type in, um, keywords and they, I haven't seen it completely. It's not, it's not out yet, but there may be boxes, dropdown boxes, or there may be something that says if there's a bicycle's involved. And I'd have to, honestly, I'd have to check with our, our current system to see if we can put in keywords like bike, um, and look in the narrative and see if it would pull those out. I just don't know that answer right now. I'd have to, I'd have to research that a little bit to see if we can go in and pull that keyword out when they type in the report.
I just have to say, I think this is an incredibly key piece of our ability to, you know, look, the police department, um, we're having this much bigger discussion about the police department's role as kind of the frontline and the go-to of so much of the city's operations, um, uh, that, that I feel like because of that, we have to be able to rely on the department to provide kind of a wide range of data. And, um, I think that this is just such a key part of us being able to gather, uh, all of the necessary data to help us to inform other decision-making processes in other agencies. Um, and it also, um, it also makes me wonder whether, we've, we've had these conversations about the auxiliary police unit. Is there some place in here for us to consider even further augmenting our ability to respond and document by not drawing on officers, but actually being able to rely on auxiliary police or civilian, or other civilians to respond to any of these kinds of cases?
Agree that we need, um, you know, our antiquated system. So I think once we get our new system, we'll be able to track this because it is very important information because it isn't captured with traffic access. So, uh, we have to figure out a way to, because it is definitely related to, um, I guess, you want to call it road rage. So I mean, we've got shootings that are related to road rage. So, uh, it's all taken very seriously because it's, I haven't seen so many incidents this year, just getting off topic, where it's road rage and people just shoot at each other because of, they get cut off or, or a vehicle accident. So it is something that we have to capture. Um, now I don't know about, what was the other question was about civilians helping with.
Yeah. I mean, is there any, is there any space here for us to kind of augment the ability of officers to document and respond to things by, by relying on auxiliary police or other civilians to be able to take these kind of reports?
It, it is something we could probably, we'd have to seek if we can, see if we can use the auxiliary, but that would be a It is something we could probably, we'd have to seek if we can see if we can use the auxiliary, but that would be a good spot, a good spot for them. Unfortunately, they don't have the um, they don't have the training to write the report, so they couldn't write the report. They couldn't investigate the incident. So it's it's going to fall upon the officers to do the investigations.
And Councilman, if I could just interject for a moment. Chief Malonson has been working on a proposal to bring to the council um for that very purpose. We are, we're not just ready to unveil it, but we do think it could serve as a force multiplier to have trained civilians to go to to certain types of accidents uh to write reports, certainly not ones that are violent or or anything like that. But um, uh, kind of your run-of-the-mill bread and butter accidents, if you will. And so um, when we are close to unveiling that, you will be one of the first persons we we brief on that. Because I think you might really um appreciate how that could help the department at this at this point in our history, frankly. You're on mute.
All right. So I think at this point, I'd like to turn to some public testimony. Uh, but I want to come back to our committee members here uh to see um if they have anything they want to bring up. I'm I'm sorry, I kind of like dominated things here, I kind of just ran with things, my apologies. Councilman Pinkett?
I'm I'm fine, I'm fine.
All right, Councilman Bullock?
Uh, yes, uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, just wanted to echo what you said earlier about um being happy to hear about this traffic of division being created. Again, uh, it highlights some of the challenges that you've uh really voiced today, so I am happy to hear things moving in the right direction. So thanks for asking those questions too and taking the lead.
Thank you. Uh, just real
All right, can I just interrupt just one moment?
Sure.
Before we go to to public testimony, could could um Chief um Graham?
Oh, I'm having trouble, Michelle, I'm having some trouble hearing you.
You can't hear me?
I can hear you fine.
Okay. Um, uh, is it is it possible before we go to public testimony to um to dismiss Chief Graham and Jacob Nab? Obviously, our our operational folks and I will will remain, uh, but if our financial folks could could take leave of us.
No problem, no problem. Uh, and before we go to public testimony, I wanted to ask Colonel Worley, could you just reiterate these numbers on um? You said fatal crashes are up twenty-three percent this year. What numbers are these again?
Oh, fa- fatal crashes are up, hold on a second, let me find the sheet, seventy-two percent. In twenty-twenty thus far, we've had fifty-five fatal accidents compared to thirty-two in two thousand nineteen.
We had thirty-two in all of two thousand nineteen?
Just year to date, year to date.
Just the year to date?
Yeah, it's just year to
Okay.
We compare this date this year to to last year, and it was seventeen of those fatal accidents involved a vehicle getting struck by a pedestrian, I mean, a pedestrian getting struck by a vehicle.
And um ten of them, ten of those pedestrian incidents were hit and runs. How many others, how many of the others were hit and runs, do you know?
Um, I'd have to hand count them. You mean the 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 fatals?
Of the total fatals, yeah.
Probably just those nine, let's see, no, ten. Looks like probably only three, only three other ones, maybe.
Okay. Um, all right.
Usually when the cars run into each other, they're they're disabled, so they can't really leave the scene.
Sure, sure. Uh, do you have any information on cyclists or scooter scooter riders?
Yes, there was no cyclist thankfully that were that were hit and runs that were that were fatals. Um, we did have um one scooter who hit a fixed object that was a fatal. And then we had a scooter yesterday, um, actually, it's not even on here, so our totals are actually one higher because we had a fatal, we had a fatal accident yesterday involving a scooter who uh who hit a vehicle. And that that accident still is under investigation where there was two people in the back, two people in the scooter and the scooter hit a uh hit a truck and the driver of the scooter was killed. Um, there was a motorcycle that hit a parked vehicle on North Avenue, um, where that driver was killed. But everything else is either auto on auto or auto on pedestrian. We had one where an automobile hit an automobile that then hit a pedestrian.
I remember that one. Okay, all right. Um, we're going to go to some public testimony here. So um, I thought Jennifer was putting up the kind of the slide for this a moment ago. Um, if you are on Webex, um, and you can click that raise hand button and raise your hand, um, I'd like to be able to call on you that way. Um, you should see on your screen a little hand signal symbol and be able to hit that. I'm not seeing anybody with their hand raised, so ah, there we go. I see Jed Weeks. Je- uh, I don't know if Jed can unmute himself or if Jennifer, you need to do that.
All right, thank you, Jennifer. Um, this is Jed Weeks with uh Bankmore. So we are the Louisville Streets Advocacy Group for the city. Um, I just wanted to share like a personal experience I had um and then um, just sort of share a couple other incidents. And my main point here is just to say that the inadequacy um or incorrectness of police response um to crashes involving vulnerable road users is unfortunately like very, very pervasive. It's uh the default more than the exception, unfortunately. So I just want to talk about an assault um that occurred to me. So uh, several years ago, unfortunately, before body worn cameras, I was riding my bike on Huntington Avenue at Twenty-Ninth Street. Um, and a car was following me and the driver uh was frustrated that we weren't going fast enough and deliberately uh swerved the car at me and my partner um and almost hit her um and then pulled up in front of us, got out of the car and started throwing things at us and then grabbed a pair of scissors and threatened to stab us to death. And I was able to sort of deescalate the situation slightly until she drove away. Uh, and I called the police, um, and that's maybe what caused her to leave. When the police arrived, uh, they told me that I was overreacting, um, that the driver was probably quote just a DUI or something. So it wasn't a big deal, uh, and refused to write a report. Um, and when I insisted that they write a report at the scene, um, that time like six cars and uh and one of the vans had showed up. They implied that someone would be leaving the scene in the van tonight and uh if I continued to demand a report, it might be me. Um, so I uh after that, um, you know, basically just said whatever left. I'm a person of privilege as a white person and is also the leader of an advocacy organization who has direct contact with Police Command. So I was able to, you know, talk to command about this and the officer was forced to write a report. Um, in that report, the officer wrote down the car was red when I said the car was black. I asked for the report to be amended and I was told by that officer that she was going to charge me with filing a false report and that I had lied to her and that the um, that said the car was red. Eventually, I swapped to Internal Affairs and it was investigated. And after all of that, um, the conclusion was, uh, you know, an officer called me and told me they couldn't change the report. Um, and uh, they had concluded an investigation on the officer, but they could not provide me with any details as to the outcome of that incident. So, you know, I, if that's the sort of treatment that I got from the police department, even with getting, you know, with with relationships that allowed me to get command um involved, um, I just can't imagine what the outcome might be for someone without that privilege or that connection. I also want to talk about a couple failures uh to sort of write reports. This year, there was a crash on Ford Avenue that's different than from the crash that Councilman Bruce mentioned where there was conflicting testimony um from witnesses and the officer wrote something completely different from what witnesses said. There's a crash on Ford Avenue in the bike lane where someone opened the door into the bike lane uh and struck a cyclist. Uh, the bicyclist fell and broke their wrist. No report was filed, they were just given a citizen contact receipt. They asked for the officer to cite the driver for uh opening the door into the door zone of a bike lane, which is like a specific piece of Maryland law. Um, the officer declined using the discretion not to write um tickets. So that's really frustrating and that was an injury uh crash, so a report's supposed to be filed and our report wasn't filed. In another instance, one of my neighbors also twentysixth and Huntington, which is a very dangerous intersection, was crossing the street. And someone turned left through the crosswalk, felt the yield, hit my neighbor uh from about twenty-five or thirty yards. Uh, he broke his hip and his wrist. Officer showed up, uh, some witnesses stopped the vehicle and forced the vehicle to stay on the scene uh for about an hour. Um, officer showed up a little after an hour, um, at which point the vehicle had finally flagged. Um, we had contact information for the driver, uh, had license plate for the vehicle, description of the vehicle, uh witnesses, and a report was also not filed in that case. And I didn't have this officer discretion. Unfortunately, in that case, my neighbor uh suffered pretty debilitating injuries, was out of work, was fired from the job. And uh, basically, he's been able to recover anything because they weren't able to go after the driver and the insurance. Back to that crash on Ford Avenue, um, this is a major contributory negligence issue as well. And if an officer doesn't write any type of report and the, you know, bicyclist can be assumed to be blind at all, they can't recover anything, even if they like have the driver's information and go to that driver's insurance company directly, because the insurance company will immediately lawyer up with their lawyers. And the victim uh who's on the bike doesn't have a lawyer, so they are just out of luck. And then I wanted to talk about uh just a poor response, um, sort of similar to the one on Ford Avenue, there was a crash uh on Liberty um last year where a woman was biking um down the Maryland Avenue cycle track on Liberty. And a driver turned left across the bicycle lane to go into a garage there where there's been multiple crashes. D O T actually finally redesigned the intersection, they're like a little safer, but people still legally park there. And she was hit by the, oh, she wasn't hit by the driver, the driver turned in front of her and she slammed her brakes on, forcing her to stop and crash. And when the police arrived at the scene, she was lying on the ground with a broken wrist and I think a cracked jaw bleeding onto the street. Um, and the officers walked up to her and sort of looked at her, asked her for her I D. Um, and then tried to grab it out of her bag while she was lying there. Um, and a witness sort of had to be like, hey, you shouldn't touch her until the medics come. So they just sort of walked and left her there alone, um, and went to the driver and started talking to the driver and filling out um the citizen contact receipt. And uh, we're going to fill out a form or started to fill out the form for the crash because the driver thought they might might have hidden the hit the cyclist. Then the driver, after they fill out the crash report, the driver says, I didn't hit the cyclist, I turned in front of them, the cyclist pumped their brakes and fell. And the police officer says, okay, I'm going to tear this up. Don't contact your insurance company, you did nothing wrong. And then walks back over to the cyclist who's still lying there on the ground and tries to take a statement from them uh while they're lying on the ground bloody. Later, after, you know, the cyclist was treated, they called because they actually wanted like a copy of their report, they were told they couldn't have a copy of a report and the report didn't exist. They came back to the scene, uh, demanded a report be filed with officers. The officers at the scene then told them they could not imagine a scenario in which they would cite a driver for hitting a bicyclist. Um, and at that point, I'm not sure the end of the story because they consulted uh private legal uh guidance um to see if they could, you know, do some recovery. But the entire scenario was not at all to protocol, it's unfortunately captured on body camera. There was further unfortunate incidents afterwards where they played with her bicycle while she was in the ambulance and pretended to be Lance Armstrong. Uh, it was captured on camera, it's it's just really bad. And, you know, these are, these are just three or four crashes in a year where we have, you know, as the major said, twenty-three hundred acres reports or thirty-three hundred damaged property reports and thousands and thousands of other crashes that go unreported, uh, in part because of our lack of reporting uh and in part because people just drive away from the scene. And, you know, people aren't allowed to tell the story or people cannot contact the police to tell the story. So I really appreciated working with the police department uh just pre-COVID and trying to come up with a training curriculum for officers. Uh, they could be like on their online curriculum so that they can learn to do better reporting and I I really appreciate the department, you know, working with us and trying to improve the situation there. But it's really out of control, it's a terrible situation, people are not being served well. And I I just don't see a way out of it unless we maybe, you know, look towards civilianizing some of this and coming up with a more dedicated response unit for vulnerable road users that isn't officers with windshield perspective and a million other things on their minds every day coming to the scene. So, sorry, that was long and kind of rambly, but I just wanted to share that, thank you.
Thanks Jed. Colonel Worley, Michelle, I mean, this is just, what Jed's explaining is kind of um in a nutshell, the biggest concern that I have is that the failure to report or respond in um a way that does justice to the vulnerable road user, the failure on the department, the department is the rule, not the exception. That um, that deference is given to drivers in a disproportionate number of cases. And I would like to know what the data actually show in terms of that. We have to be able to uh look at, I'd like to know, I'd like to know how many police responses were made to uh incidents involving pedestrians or cyclists? And in how many of those cases reports were made? And in how many of those cases a citation was issued to the driver or the cyclist or pedestrian? And in how many of those cases um fault was assessed? It just seems really clear from everything that Jed said and one hundred percent of my own personal experience. And, you know, nearly one hundred percent of the cases that have been relayed to me over a number of years that that officers, despite training and despite, you know, relaying these kind of concerns are are going to continue and persist in like Jed put it, the kind of the windshield perspective that that cyclists and vulnerable road users aren't getting a a fair shake when it comes to this. It just can't be the case that if it's officer discretion that in, you know, ninety percent of the cases or something that officer discretion results in the officer not issuing a citation. Like if they're net, if 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 there if their discretion is used to not do anything so consistently, then it's it's not discretion, it's bias. And I think we have a duty to suss out bias where it exists and not allow it to be swept under the rug as simply officer discretion. So I'd like to, I'd like to know what we can do to audit these circumstances. Because it's, I mean, it's just the the records and the data have to be there and we just can't, we can't ignore that. I'm going to go to some further public testimony here. I see Corey Jennings with his hand raised. Corey. Um, let's see, Jennifer, can we unmute Corey?
I'm having difficulty unmuting Corey Jennings.
Corey, can you unmute yourself?
No, there we go. Sorry about that. Hi, yes, my name's Corey Jennings, I'm a resident of the 500 block of 28th Street in Remington. I am a cyclist, but the main story that I wanted to bring up today was a story of police contact with a scooter user directly in front of my home. I was at home one day on a Saturday, just hanging out with my front door open, and I heard a very young woman scream. I walked outside, and she was in a panicked state, saying that she had been followed and that a car had hit her on her scooter crossing the Big Jump on 28th Street, and that she had, you know, in that panicked state, kind of just fallen in front of my house. She had a very bloody face, knees, lots of damage to her. Panicked, did not want any, me anywhere near her, near her, did not want any help, which just, and she's about 14 or 15, so she's a very young woman in a state of panic. I called the police to try to assist her and try to get some help with this. They showed up and they came and had medics. I tried to relay to them the situation that I heard from her. She was screaming, trying to get on the phone with her mother, saying that someone was following her, and that she got hit by a car. And through a few interactions with the police, with them additionally coming up to my house two times, trying to find any way for them to state that it had nothing to do with a car. They had asked me a couple times, are you sure she didn't fall in front of your house? Are you sure this didn't happen? And I relayed to them many, many times that, you know, I didn't see it actually happen, but everything that she had said to me, and even to other people within earshot, was that there was some car following her and that she had been hit by a vehicle. You know, I didn't know the extent of this, it was not something that happened to me, so I didn't have case, the case number, and it wasn't my family member or friend, so I didn't feel, you know, I was trying to respect their privacy and I didn't want to follow up. But officers came up to my home many times trying to get me to confirm to them that, oh, this incident happened in front of your home, oh, she must have just fallen on this crack. And I had to relay to them many, many times that that is not what I understood to happen, and that was not what the young woman was saying. So it was a very institutional challenge to me where it seemed like they just did not want to believe her, that a vehicle could have been involved with her falling off of a scooter or anything like that. And I'm not sure how many of you guys know, but there is a very dangerous part of the Big Jump where a vehicle could have struck her very easily where there's a turnoff from 28th Street to 83. So in addition to that, my other, my only other public testimony is just about the speed of the vehicles in the city. It's something that I see extremely, extremely challenging these days, and I really do appreciate anything that can be done to reduce the speed of vehicles. I do think that additional enforcement needs to be made, and that, you know, some of the maybe things that aren't able to be happening right now during COVID, that the police can, resources to that enforcement would be helpful because as a vulnerable road user myself, you know, as that speed increases next to a cyclist, the danger increases. The amount of time that a car can change their course if they see you decreases, and the potential for injury increases significantly every mile an hour is, you know, one more bone broken or anything like that if they do interact with you. So it is extremely dangerous on the streets these days, but it is one of the nicest times of the year to ride your bike. So it's a very conflicting thing, being out on the road currently. So, you know, I haven't had any direct interactions with the police myself, thank God, because I haven't been involved in an accident like this. But that one incident directly in front of my house really showed that it didn't seem like the police want to trust even the people that they're dealing with when they're giving public testimony to them or giving a statement to them. They really did seem like they were trying to find anything to contradict what she was saying to them. So that's what I have to say, but I really do appreciate any reduction of the speed within the city.
Thank you, Corey. And I'll just kind of, you know, summarize my thoughts on that. Is that, again, this is kind of indicative of the kind of response that we get where an officer, in this case, is very actively seeking, it would seem, to get somebody to corroborate the officer's willful interpretation of what happened, or the officer's kind of scenario that they're, you know, adopting as their kind of summary. In the same case, you know, in much the same vein as how in my case or in the case of this incident on Ford Avenue that I discussed, where the officer just willfully refuses to accept the information as, you know, readily available and presented to them. This is, you know, this is a real problem, and so I guess, it, look, it's burdensome. Citizens should not have to expect that every time they get in such a situation that they're going to have to ask for a supervisor. But it seems like this is almost, without exception, what is going to have to be done essentially in any situation where a vulnerable road user is not, you know, maybe it's going to be different if it's a car jumping the sidewalk and killing an old lady while she's walking her grandchild down the street while this, you know, which happened a couple of years ago. Maybe it's going to be different in a situation like that where it's a hit and run and somebody's dead. But, you know, by and large, it seems like it's going to continue to be impossible to get an officer. And as in Corey's case here, what it sounds like is like even when you do, and in the case that Jed brought up, even when you do call in for additional support after the fact or call for a supervisor, it seems like they're in on the deal in refusing people the kind of justice and service that they deserve. So this sounds like it's a pretty seriously prevalent problem that I don't think today's going to be able to be the last time we discuss this. I mean, I think that we're going to have to come back to this in the not-too-distant future. Do we have anybody else that would like to give public testimony? If you're on WebEx, you can raise your hand. If you're not on WebEx and you're on the phone, you may be unable to. And I can see who's on the phone and who's not. So I will go to the couple of folks who are on the phone. It looks like we have Yolanda Takesian. Yolanda, you're unmuted, do you have any public testimony to offer? Sounds like not, okay, thank you, Jennifer. Okay, we have, I don't see anybody else's hand raised. So I'm gonna come back to the committee here and ask one more time if any of the other committee members have anything kind of in closing here, and ask if BPD has anything in closing here. Councilman Pinkett?
No, I'm fine, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Bullock?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. One thing I'll just say as we close out, you know, Mr. Chair, I thank you for sharing your lived experience. I thank Jed and others who called and talked about their experiences. Hopefully, this makes us all better in terms of communicating, whether we're talking about our offices, our districts, and also interacting between the police and citizens. So again, I thank everybody for their participation today, and thank you for leading the effort.
Thank you, Councilman. Michelle?
Yes, sir, thank you. I actually echo Councilman Bullock's comments. You know, this is, the whole point of the consent decree is to improve, improve our processes, our internal processes, and improve how we are relating to the community, all of the community. And that actually includes our pedestrians, our cyclists. And so we are trying to do that. And I absolutely think that this hearing is an opportunity for us to hear, for them to hear from us. But we definitely have work to do, and I think we're all open to that, open to that challenge, ready for that challenge. Councilman, I will tell you, as soon as we close, I will send an email to you and the committee members with the grant information that you had requested. I have the dates as well that Chief Graham had mentioned. And you'll see when you open that up, each jurisdiction, on one of the documents, it shows when each jurisdiction is supposed to engage in which activity. So definitely, and I'll copy Chief Graham, and in case any of you have any questions on that as well. Thank you, sir.
Thanks, Michelle. Okay, I really appreciate everybody participating and tuning in with us today. I'd like to come back to this at a later date, but I will just, I'm going to call this into recess for now. And we'll see about calling another hearing at a later date because I think it's worth reconvening. So this committee is in recess, thank you.